Just recording.
Yeah.
It started and then ended. Yeah. And, and there's no more, no longer going. Three for about 11 seconds.
Gotta love technology.
We are live.
What's it showing? Is it showing us or just the courtroom?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not showing everything, but it's showing the laptop as the first one.
Yeah. Right. Just hit control. But to do it, I just close that. Huh? Only one time. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Brandon. Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is June the 8th, 2021. It is now 10:06, and we're here to conduct the regular session in Hunt County Commissioners' Court. We're both here live, and public is welcome to come to the courtroom, and we're also streaming it live at huntcounty.net. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We ask you to give us guidance through this court, making decisions for the people. We ask us to have patience. Give us knowledge and reference to making righteous decisions. We ask you to continue blessing this great country that we live in. In Christ's name we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. This time, I call the meeting to order. We have Commissioner Hutchins straight and Martin present. Commissioner Harrison is not here today. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the May 25th, 2021 regular session and the June 1st, 2021 special session. I entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. If anyone's in the audience wishes to speak, you're limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. We're also, for those that are watching it on the live stream, you can go to our webpage, huntcounty.net, in the comments section, and you can send us an email with a statement that will be read to the court later in the meeting. Or you can give us a phone number, and we'll call you back later in the meeting, and you can address the court directly. Is anybody present that wants to make any public comments today? If not, we'll move on to old business. Action item one, interlocal cooperative contract with Texas Department of Public Safety for the construction and lease of a driver's license office in Hunt County Sheriff's Department. Daniel Wright.
All right. In your packet today, there are just two items, the COVID-19 resolution we'll talk about in a little bit, and then the ICC contract with DPS for the new driver's license office construction and rental. We had, this has been going back and forth for
Two years.
Two years now. But we finally, in fact, just five minutes ago, I got an email accepting all of our changes to the contract, except for one, in that one is not, we believe, not going to be necessary. Basically, the one change that they added, that I talked with their attorney about yesterday, and they added to the preamble, the third paragraph, relates to our, the county's authority to contract with the state for this type of service, to accept the money for the renovations, and then to provide them janitorial services for the contract period. But this, other than that, this is the same document that I sent to the Commissioners about, right out four weeks ago, and that we discussed two meetings ago, and discussed briefly at the last meeting. The only other issue that remains is we had added some initial language to try to protect the county in the, if one particular thing happened, which was that we straddled two of the biennial budgets for DPS, because their budget ends in a few months, and this project will definitely not be done by the time the new budget rolls over. The way that that's worked in the past is when the state has had, or a state agency has had a budget, if they didn't spend any of that money, they had to give it back to the state. We've been told now about DPS and asked, I think Bobby talked to one of their people yesterday, and I talked with their attorney yesterday, and basically told them that we needed some assurance of what they're telling us, which in this case is that due to COVID and problems with the storm that have created contracting issues and timing budgetary issues, that the legislature rolled over this year's budget into next year so that we will be protected, so that our taxpayers don't have to cover any incurred costs that go into next budget year. And so this contract is written without respect to the budget year, in which the contract costs are incurred, which gives us about a two-year and four-month period to get this done. It'll definitely be done in that period, but I would suggest if the court wants to move forward with approving this, I would make it an approval that's subject to getting confirmation from the agency that that is the case. Because despite looking at the legislature's website, I can't confirm independently that that's exactly what happened. The agency budgets are extremely complicated, and there's not just some sentence that says that's what's supposed to happen, that it rolls over. That's what multiple people at their agency have told us now. I believe that they're telling the truth. That's not the issue. I think that there's just a desire to ensure that our taxpayers are covered and not going to be on the hook for any incurred costs that go into the next biennial budget year, which starts in a few months. Other than that, there's no changes from when we talked about it a few weeks ago, I guess a month ago. Overall, what this is going to do is have them incur about 470, or I'm sorry, $616,000 over the term of the agreement. Most of that is going to go to construction costs of $470,000. This is written as a normal construction contract where there are, where there's room for change orders, which inevitably come up in big construction projects like this. We just have to get their, Techsots approval for any change orders. But at this point, there's no question that Techsot, I mean that DPS is ready to move forward with this, and I think that we've covered most of the individual terms with different staff members who they're going to affect, especially the building maintenance people, to ensure that their costs, which are listed in here, is $2,440 a month, or $146,000 and some change over the 60-month period, is going to be enough to cover what all they're doing over there. So we can talk about any individual parts of the contract that you might have questions about, but this is, this contract encapsulates all the things that we've talked about in the session a month ago, all the way stretching back to two years ago when we first started talking to them.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, if we approve this today, then next meeting, we'll award the contract to the appropriate firm that was selected by our, our committee, our architectural committee. And now, Daniel, on the contract, I was skimming it right quick on the latest contract, and one of the previous, and I may be overlooking it, it addressed the electricity, the utility bill, because originally, we were going to give them a separate meters, but because of the type, the construction of the building, that was going to be almost impossible, and we had an agreement to just, we were going to figure out a proportional amount for the electricity bill to be reimbursed each month. And it was in one of the drafts, but I don't
That was initially in the draft about a year and a half ago.
I don't see it in this.
It's, I don't believe that that is in this contract.
Well, we need, we need to make sure that gets covered, so we can prove it condition by working out that, just the verbiage to make sure we get reimbursed for the electricity cost.
Yes, we can definitely make that contingent on that.
Yeah, I think it's gas and utilities, both.
Yeah.
And we'd, we'd had an agreement, just do it on a proportional basis of the square footage of the building.
Will we be able to go on and take action on this?
Yes.
Yeah, it can be made subject to both of those things. Number one, getting confirmation about the budget, and then number two, adding a proportional cost for utilities.
All right, Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question for Daniel. Can this also be subject to the $44,446.10 sales for architectural fees that the county has paid upfront, that they were supposed to have already reimbursed us back for?
You, what do you mean contingent on it? You mean contingent on the actual receipt of those funds?
You're gonna, you said you're going to take action today, subject to certain items.
Yeah.
And I just want to know that whatever action is taken is going to put us to where we're going to be able to receive this money that should have been reimbursed back to us previously for the architectural fees.
Yes, and I mean, basically, you can approve it, subject to confirmation that that's going to be paid. That, I mean, they have very clearly told us orally, at least, that that is going to be paid.
Well, they have, but we, you know, we've emailed them and all sorts of things, nothing's happened, so
Yeah.
We just want to make sure that it, that it happens.
Sure.
I agree.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion for approval, subject to the three exceptions of getting confirmation, they have budgetary authority to pay us, that we get the electricity operations worked out in the contract, that they'll pay the electrical and all utility costs.
Yeah.
And that we get confirmation, they are going to reimburse us for the architectural fees that we've already incurred.
Yes.
Your Honor, I so moved, but I would like, this court would like to thank you and Daniel for moving forward on this. This has been about a two and a half year, Dale, and we appreciate the work that y'all have done in reference to this. That is a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And congratulations to everyone, we're getting a driver's license office back, finally. First week I was in office, I started working on this, so. Thank you for the comments, Philip. Action item number two, Brian, are we, do we get anything back yet?
They withdrew.
They withdrew? Okay, all right, so we're just striking item two. All right, consent calendar, Commissioners, you've got the consent calendar in front of you. Entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Shall move. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number one, resolution extending and modifying the April 28th, 2020 COVID-19 related resolution in social distancing guideline, guidelines to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Daniel?
Okay, that's the first three pages, really the first two pages of your packet. This is exactly the same as it was two weeks ago, except it has new dates, extending it two more weeks.
Daniel, could you, could you remind us and the public why this is, the reasons for doing this?
There are several. It really relates to ensuring that the county can receive emergency funds that come from the federal and state government. At this point, most of the rest of the operative things have been taken out. It used to have different requirements related to what had to happen in different buildings and things like that. This one basically just says that there's an ongoing state of emergency, specifically so that we'll be in line to get those emergency funds, because at least some of them are going to be subject to that ongoing declaration.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'm going to skip two and three right quick and go on, get through some of the other agenda, then we'll come back to the presentations. Action item four, state plan of operation between the State of Texas and Hunt County Sheriff's Office. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number five, a rental contract for the Greenville Municipal Auditorium in Hunt County in the amount of $500 for the use of upcoming emergency service district meeting. Commissioners, this is, we have to sign a contract with the City of Greenville, it'll authorize me to sign the contract, and we'll hold the one meeting at the GMA, it was not available for one of the two meetings, and we're going to be at the Greenville High School Auditorium for the other meeting. And we're not being required to do anything with Greenville. Entertain a motion for approval of this.
Shall move. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number six, the Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefit Pool 2020, 2022 renewal, and 2021 dental plan, and 2122 vision plan election. Brittany Turner, good to see you.
Yes. What I've put in your packets today is what we were presented by TAC Health and Employee Benefits Pool for our upcoming health benefits for 2122. As you can see in the letter, there was a 9% increase to our health insurance, which is a little over $1,000 more per person that we would be paying if we stayed on our current plan. It is my proposition that we do stick to our current plan. There is another, or one of the reasons why is because that plan is a grandfathered plan, and what that means is that we have not made any provisions and changes, major changes, since the ACA, the Affordable Care Act, was enacted back in 2010. So we don't have as many limitations and requirements set to us as a part of this grandfathered plan as if you were non-grandfathered. We would have to comply to a lot of the different restrictions and limitations of the ACA. So there are two grandfathered plans that are on your sheets. One of them is our current plan, which is $1,023, which is what I'm presenting to the court, and I propose the court to approve. There's also option one, which is also grandfathered. It's just $7 cheaper per person, which is 28, we have 400 employees, so about $2,800 difference a month in our plan, and it would change our, it would change our, I'm sorry, I didn't print this page out. Our deductibles would increase just a slight amount, and everything out-of-pocket maximum would increase slight amount, and a little bit on the third tier of the prescription plan would increase a slight amount for a $7 change. So they would, our employees would realize an increase in their payments that they would have to pay for their insurance as they visited. So it's my proposition to the court that they approve our current, that you approve our current plan, which is the 300G and prescription plan option, RX2AG, which are grandfathered plans at $1,023.86 or 86 cents a month per employee. Do you have any questions?
That's all of it, right? That's including the dental and the vision?
That is
All part of it?
I apologize. That, that is just for our health?
Health.
And everything, yes, and I have the sheet right here.
The dental is?
The dental did increase
3%.
Just slightly at 6.8%. It was currently $27.06 a month. It would increase to $28.90 a month. There are no other options, that's just the new rate for our dental plan. And the vision did not realize any increase, so those premiums would remain the same as they are right now.
But that would be no cost in reference to the dental, to the employee?
No.
No, the dental, there's no cost to the employee. The vision, however, is the employee's cost. The county does not provide vision.
I would like to point out to the Commissioners' Court also, last year, there was not an increase at all.
Correct. We did not realize any increase in health insurance, which is almost unheard of last year, so
Thank you, COVID.
We were very, we were very lucky last year. So to be able to, to honestly just see a 9% increase this year is, is actually not too terrible.
Maybe we can get reimbursed at $2,800 out of the art money. All right, Commissioners, Brittany had talked to me earlier in the week, and I concur with her recommendation that we go with the alternate, with the increase of $7 to the county, and the county pick up the cost and leave the employees with the same deductibles.
Did you, we were going to stick to the same plan that we were on.
Same plan.
No increase, no, no $7, oh, yes, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, there's a $7 increase to the county.
Yes, correct.
No, no increase to the employees, on that part, but they will have a little, we absorb all of it. Now, we, they have to pay for the dental.
No, we pay the
We pay the dental, they pay for vision, okay.
Yes, sir.
I get confused, I'm old. Okay, Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval of
I'll make a motion, Your Honor, that we stick to the plan that we have and not change anything on reference to health, dental, and vision.
Correct.
Second.
Got a motion in second, any discussion? Mark, you had a question, looked like on your face, you were
No, I was making, I was making sure, I was processing that to make sure
Okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item seven, monthly treasury report for April 2021. Brittany?
As you can see, the report in your packet, you can see all of our, our cash in bank, investments, and outstanding debt. We have a month in balance of $59,071,330.52. Like I said, cash in bank and invested funds. Can also see all of our outstanding debt that we have. We have a balance due of $35,486, 631.96 of outstanding debt. No major changes in the month of April.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? I would like to make a comment to the public, I think, on the debt. The debt is high because of our pension liabilities, which our pension liabilities are based on GASM requirements and our, our retirement requirements, and both of those make us have the money for 100% of all people employed retiring at eligibility, and, and we have to have 100% funding. And the odds against that happening are zero, I guess, because we don't have employees that work here long enough to get retirement, but we have to plan for it. So it makes those numbers look really out of balance, but we're, we're really in really good shape with our retirement plan. We're at 85% funded, I think, with the TAC
87.
87?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 87 now percent funded, so that's, that's with 100% of all people that work here being retired, so that's outstanding, so that debt number is always a little confusing to people, I think. With that, Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval of the treasury report.
I so move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number eight, the upgrade of approximately 2,550 feet of County Road 4112 from dirt to oil sand in precinct four, money is in escrow. Entertain a motion for approval.
I so move, Your Honor.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number nine, the upgrade of approximately 2,640 feet of County Road 4705 from dirt to rock in precinct four, money in escrow. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 10, the final plat of Max Land in precinct four. Brian, any comments on the plats today?
No, actually, the improvement of County Road 4112 is the road improvement for this plat, so it'll be improved as soon as they can do work like that.
Now, this is one they've already upgraded to rock, and they're upgrading to oil sand?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 11, the final plat of Weand Estates in precinct three.
Ample frontage, no rideaway issues, it's on an FM road, pretty, pretty straightforward, pretty simple deal, one lot plat.
Okay. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're going to go back up to number two. Thank y'all, by the way, for patience in letting us get through all of the, the quick business. Presentation for Texas Local Technical Assistance Program regarding programs offered for Hunt County Road and Bridge Departments. Ray Balkin. Let's see, Ray, if I can get you up. Okay?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, elected officials, other members. My name is Ray Balkin, with the University of Texas at Arlington. With me is Aaron Townsend. Aaron, stand up, lay your hands, so we know who you are. Aaron is the program manager there for the LTAP, for the state of Texas. I'm here to go ahead and, and talk to you a little bit. Myself and Commissioner Hutchins and Harrison, we met at the VG Young Institute of Government Conference back in February, and then we had some continuing conversation. And then last month, actually, sat down with Commissioner Hutchins and Harrison and their two foremen from their precincts, and we talked about what we can actually do for the county at zero cost. And let me restate that again, Commissioners, we are not here to sell you anything, we are actually here to give you things.
And we like that.
Yeah, so, make that very clear. When I'm at conferences, I always tell everybody in exhibit hall, I'm the only person in the room trying to give you something, I'm not trying to sell you anything, okay? It's already paid for. Our program actually goes back to 1982, I'm not going to talk about everything here for, for expediency's sake, but back in 1982, Federal Highway Administration told all state DOTs, what you need to do is have a local technical assistance program. And y'all can do it one of two ways. You can do it internal to the DOT, or you can outsource it to a university. Texas DOT decided to go ahead and outsource it to a university, and the University of Texas at Arlington has that. Techsot does some things under this contract as well, for all the counties and cities. They'll provide recycled asphalt pavement, they provide surplus guard rail signage, things of that nature. The big side of it is the training that we bring to the table, okay? And like I said, that's where the money comes from, so never any cost to y'all. Why about training employees is important? One of the biggest things anybody's ever interested in is risk reduction, especially in the cities and counties. If you have untrained employees, they have a 49% accident rate than employees that are actually are trained. 40% of employees will leave their employer in their first year if they don't get any training at all, 40% higher rate. 68% of employees say training is the most important benefit for them. And the Association for Talent Development of America says an average of 32 hours are spent on training employees across the board in most organizations, public and private. You can't afford to not train your employees. Most of us know who Zig Ziglar is. I love to say he says, "The only thing worse than training an employee and having them leave is to not train them and they stay." Because what have you got?
Not much.
You got a problem, you got a rift, is what you have. These are the counties that we've served from the program at LTAP, at the university. As you can see, Hunt County is not on this list, we're wanting to edge on, and, and that's what we're going to be trying to do here real quick. Our training and programs break into three different buckets, what we call safety, infrastructure development, infrastructure management, workforce development, and I'm just going to show you some things. In safety, we do a whole lot of different classes. And gentlemen, one of the things that I did this morning is I put a couple of different things up there in your place. It's got a book in there about job descriptions, I'm going to talk about that in a minute. It's got our mini-catalog, the courses that we offer, and one of our publications that we do quarterly also. It's a description of what the training classes are, how many participants we can hold in it, and how long the actual training is. Like confined space safety training, it's an eight-hour class, electrical, it's an eight-hour. We do heavy equipment for wildfires. We do a lot of things that makes counties and cities compliant with state law. As an example, all cities and counties in the state of Texas are required to follow what's called the Texas Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. What does that mean? Everybody's supposed to sign the same way, everybody's supposed to use markers the same way, everybody's supposed to make sure their employees have fluorescent clothing when they're working on the rideaway, et cetera, et cetera. We have classes that address those issues for the counties. We do workshops in addition to regular formal training. Our training is always brought to you. You don't go to us, we bring our instructors to your site, is what we do, so you don't have every travel outlay either. We'll bring workshops to you. You may give us a call, like Aaron, and say, "Hey, Aaron, I need" us a call, like Aaron, and say, "Hey, Aaron, I need a workshop on improving crew safety," or the culture of it, or something like that. She'll do some discussions, she'll reach out, she'll find an instructor, we'll set it up and make it happen for you. These are the heavy equipment classes, the infrastructure are part of it. Most of these classes, or some of them are 32 hours in length. Twenty-eight of that 32 hours is spent on the machine. We believe heavily in hands-on, and we just don't want to go out and push dirt around in the field, we want to go to your county road and learn how to pull the material out of the ditch, how to incorporate it with existing material that's there, how to put a proper slope on it, do compaction, the whole nine yards. So, it's A to Z what we do there. We keep those heavy equipment classes small, four people, that's it, because we run two maintainers at the same time. Instructors walking, watching two machines going. The other four hours, we cover safety, about the maintainer, preventive maintenance, things like that. We do things like, are your signs legal? It's amazing, I drive, at one point in time, I'm retired Texas dot, I have been to every single county in the state of Texas. And now, with what I do for the university, I drive county roads a lot. And I take a look, and it's amazing, the signs that I see that are not compliant with state law. It places a county at risk, and I know that's something you're interested in, in reducing risk. Seal coats, how to do it right if you're doing those types of things. Drainage, vegetation control, roadway preventive maintenance, we do all that. Here's some more of our heavy equipment classes that we do. We can do workshops, we can do things about protecting roadway users in the county to avoid lawsuits, challenging communicating, you know, highway improvement safety plans, and on, and on, and on. We've offered a new program that we are coming up with, and it has to do with the job description program, and you have a book up there about this stick that we laid down. Back in 2020, we applied for what's called a State Transportation Innovation Council grant, and we received it from Federal Highway. And we went out to and did a polling of counties and said, "What help do you guys need besides the regular training that we do already?" And what we heard overwhelmingly from the counties was, "We don't have good job descriptions for our people." It was amazing. When it was all said and done, I went and put some information together, over 150 counties in the state of Texas had no job descriptions at all for their road and bridge walkers. So, what did we do? We drafted 21 of them. We've put them out there on our website, and we've also produced them in a hard copy book and said, "Here you go, they're already written for you. We have done the heavy lifting." Download it, take our logo off, put your logo on it. If you don't like a line item that's on there, change it. If there's a line item you don't want, take it out. If there's one you want to put in, go ahead. The work has been done for you already. So, that's the job description. What we also do is like, is the part two that I came and worked with commissioners, and we developed an actual training program that we're hoping to implement here just in July for Hunt County for precinct one and four. In conjunction of that, we do some what we call operator qualification assessments. We will actually bring a qualified instructor on site, and these guys have been doing this for 30, 40 years, and they'll take your employee and they put him through a series of tasks. They'll say, "Joe, get on this maintainer and do this list of tasks." Independent evaluation. They will do it in writing, they're going to give it back to the commissioner and the foreman, they'll say, "Joe's operating at a basic entry level." So, we recommend he take the basic maintainer class, a year later, take the intermediate, and a year after that, take the advanced. Or, the guy's operating at this level already, he's good to go, doesn't need any training on that machine. So, we're going to do that as well. You look at me like you got a question, Commissioner.
Well, I do have one. I think, I think, I think this is good. I'm glad you're here, for one thing. I think that basically, as far as manpower and stuff like that, with each, with each precinct, that we might be able to send two at a time to do different things in reference to combining, from combining schools. I, I think this would be good.
Okay, thank you, yeah. And we'll talk about that later, how we can make it all happen for you collectively. This is that stick program that I was talking about, the job descriptions. And like I said, the guide has already been developed, it's out there, it's on our website, and everything like that. And again, it's no cost when we come out. Because what I built for the two commissioners is based on interviews that we did and with their road and bridge folks. We did that on day one, I came back day two and presented a plan to them, and I'm going to show you that plan that we come up with. Okay. What you can come up with from a structured training program is a more efficient, productive workforce, reduced turnover, less rework. That's important. We all know the old saying, "Do it right the first time." Because they have to go back and do it a second time, it's costing you two or three times the effort, the people, the resources, if you'd have done it right the first time. And you can also have an improved safety record. A basis to pay, excuse me, let me go back one, for performance rather than across the board, regardless of an employee's performance. Let me talk about that for a second. Counties typically have one of two different models, how they compensate their employees. Across the board, when it comes to pay raises, or what's called pay for performance. In other words, I have five employees, employee one is operating here, so I pay him a little bit more because of experience and his skill. And then I've got this guy down here that I'm really wanting to get up here, is what I want him to do. I don't want to get rid of him necessarily. He's a good hand, he's reliable, but I want to increase his skills. So, how we get him up here is to give him that incentive with a pay for performance, give him the training, give him the coaching, give him the mentoring, and move him up, is what we want to do. For you to properly classify and determine the level of training, we do the operator qualifications, I've talked about that already. And we can each actually come back a year later and do that reassessment again, to see if the skill level has increased with that employee. Now, what's nice about this whole thing is you get to decide what is the best approach for your county. One of the things that I asked the two commissioners was, "How many hours are you willing to dedicate from your two precincts right now to send your employees to?" And we're going to show that to you in a little bit. We also, from the university, now I've talked about training, we do some other unique things. We work very closely with the Federal Highway on putting in from stuff out that's called EDC, Everyday Counts. It's a program that's been running for 12 years. And every two years, they come out with anywhere from eight to 12 different new programs. As an example, right now, this year, we're in what's called ED6 Brown. And I'm a member of the executive team with Federal Highway, and we're working on strategic highway workforce development. It's a nationwide program to help contractors recruit workforce for construction, is what it is. We're already doing some of that here in Texas with the programs from the LTAP, is what we're doing. We're taking it to the local level, is what we're doing, okay? So, that's an idea. One really nice class that has come out of the ED6, and I threw it up here, we do nine different ones, is on focus on reducing rural roadway departures. Fact, gentlemen, in Texas, every day, 10 people will die on a roadway. That's the statistics, it has been for the last 10 years. It's not improving, it's getting worse. Fact, you take 36, 50 people divided by 254 counties, the average is 14 deaths per county, per year. Fact, you're going to have a fatality on county road in Hunt County, if you have not already. This workshop, or this class, is designed to help you for no cost to implement what are called proven safety countermeasures. Things that you can do on your roadway with signage, awareness, cutting brush back on blind corners, et cetera, et cetera, to help prevent departures from the roadway. The statistics out there, if you leave a roadway in a crash, or going into a crash situation, example, a deer jumps out in the road and a person, the smart thing, I hate to say it, is to hit the deer, it really is. But, the natural tendency is to swerve. You go into a ditch, once you left a ditch and you go upside down, the chances of you dying from that go way up, versus if you just hit the deer. So, we try to show some different things that you can do on your roadway, roadways, prevent some of those things. We'll also do technical assistance. Let me jump over to this. This is actually a road in one of the east Texas counties, I took this picture three years ago. They met us at a conference and they said, "We have a problem. Can you come out and talk to us?" We said, "Sure, we can." Ninety people lived on this county road, so it was not a low volume. They said, "We have been dumping base material on this road for the last 10 years, and this is what it looks like six months out of the year. What can y'all do?" So, we went out and did a visit. There was a small river up here at the top, nothing major, but it, it would flow down here downhill. They used to have culverts in here, but they had filled back in solid. What we recommended was put in a low water crossing and concrete it. They said, "We have the workforce to do that ourselves, we don't have to outsource that." And then, we asked, "Where are you getting this material from?" They said, "From a quarry here in a county." They give it to us, it's their tailings, okay? Had a high iron content. We said, "Do y'all have a crusher?" "Yeah, we got one." So, what we recommended was to do concrete stabilized crush rock approach to either side of it. They called a couple of months later, said, "Thank you, we've just been dumping material for 10 years, we put it in, and the whole project costs us $4,000, and we did it ourselves." So, just providing a different set of eyes sometimes on a problem, we can come up with a good solution for the counties. We handle road maintenance, drainage, equipment maintenance, roadway markings, works on all these types of different things, even project management planning and implementation, okay? We have a variety of experts that are, most of us are retired from TechDOT or other construction private industry. We want to help you, is what we want to do, okay? We have a very comprehensive website, just remember the, the address, the LTAP.org, and I'm not going to go into about it, but I'm going to show you some really neat things. It tells us about the training that we have out there on it, how to sign up for it. On there, we have in our library, we have newsletters, and I gave you the latest publication that we do, it's called Better Roads, Safer Roads. There's no advertising it or anything, it's just good information about safety on the roadway and the workplace, things that are all related to road and bridge operations. We do technical papers. Now, here's the really neat part, equipment lending. County roads are subject to what's called Chapter Six Low Volume Roads in the state of Texas. In other words, you don't have to sign at interstate level for county roads, y'all know that, okay? But it does say, this is what you have to, this is what you can do. Your average daily traffic count defines, am I low volume or not, of a thousand. Well, you can't really guess at that. How do you do that? You do it with a counting machine. Y'all have seen this, they throws a tube across the road, the pneumatic tells the machine, you know, how you set it, how many clicks, and it tells them. We will check this out and send it to you to use for free for 30 days. When you're finished, send it back and say, "Thank you, we're good." You go buy that, it costs you 10 grand. We have things for figuring slope degrees, check it out, not a problem. Need to check the reflectivity of your signs across the county, you go buy this critter right here, it'll cost you 15 grand. Again, request to be checked out, we'll send it to you. When you're finished, send it back. We've got radar boards. We've got our own YouTube channel. I think I showed, did I show this to you, Mark?
Yeah.
Have you looked at any of the videos yet?
I have, I have, yeah.
You want to comment on them?
Very good.
They really are. I mean, they're, they're very, very well done. You know, it's not somebody to walk around with their phone going, you know, "Hey, you know, he's doing this like you see on TikTok or something." These are professionally produced videos. We have some that have been hit 96,000 times on a topic like how to cut a V ditch with a motor grader, okay? So, we've got folks across the nation that are actually coming to Texas virtually and looking at our videos, how we do things. We've got training on demand through DVDs and things like that you can check out also. Our staff, we run lean, is what we do. Brian Sims is our executive director, like I said, Aaron here is in the back, is our program manager. She has one assistant, Amelia Medford. Occasionally, we have some students to help us out, but COVID kind of turned that upside down, so it's been a little hectic. And then we have instructors, we're all consultants, we work independent for the university, instructors and some administrative support. Aaron and Amelia are your contacts, and my name is Ray Balk, and I'll take questions.
Thank you, Ray, very much. Commissioners, you got questions?
I just want to show you one thing, it'll take just a second, I promise. This is a spreadsheet that I developed for the two.
Nut row. Let's see what I can do here. I hope we don't crash. Hold your breath. Don't know. That's beyond my knowledge.
That's all right. I'll tell you the nitty gritty. We put together a multi-stage training plan. And I got to do this off memory, because I've been to about 25 counties in the last three months, so they kind of blended together. We did equipment operator one through three. We also did a foreman, truck driver, and a general labor. There's different tracks for each person, and I'm just going to read this first one off of the board. As an example, in year one, we would suggest sending your equipment operators to 77 hours of training. So, that's a short, two, uh, two weeks out of the year. Because that's the commitment that Stephen Mark, you know, said, that's the baseline. I've had some counties say, "I want to keep it at 40 hours." I've had some say 60. I've actually had some go up to 160 hours, you know, an entire month or four weeks. So, each county gets to pick, you know, where I want it. And then they tell me what they want their focus on. Some say, "I want more of a focus on safety," others say, "I want it more on traffic," others say, "I want it more on equipment." So, yours is actually a blend, is the approach that, that Mark and Steve wanted. So, we had that documented and given to them. Also prepared a document about, you know, how to onboard road and bridge folks, how to do some evaluations with them, how to do some mentoring, recognition programs, things to keep them engaged, you know, and show that we care about you, is what we do. So, we can, Mark and Steve had those documents and they can pass them to you for it, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We used to get statistics in reference to counts on these county roads, it was from every two to four years that TechDOT did this. Have they quit doing it completely? Because I cannot get a.
No, sir. Who's done through, is, it's done through the Traffic Safety Division in Austin. You can actually call your local office here for your county, your TechDOT office, and they can get that information, or you can go online as a county and get it. At one time, DPS did it years ago, and then it migrated to TechDOT, okay, about 12 years ago. The system is, is called CRIS, which stands for Crash Record Information System, okay, C-R-I-S. The information is a lot more current now, it's in CRIS. You can pull data for your past fiscal year, but you can also pull stuff as current as last month, because it's all on time. It's a lot faster than it used to be in the past.
I'm talking about traffic count, I understand that TechDOT now they completely have done away with traffic as far as, you know, we send accident reports in, and they keep that. I'm talking about count itself. You say that.
Oh, traffic counts.
Traffic count.
TechDOT still does traffic counts on its infrastructure only. They are not.
Okay, they're not doing it on county roads anymore.
No, sir, they are not. That's why, it's part of our program, here's the equipment, it's just a matter of throwing it out there, and then you go back a week later, and there's the number.
Okay, tell me this, in reference to that equipment, you know, let's say I choose to go and be able to get that equipment from you. It was kind of funny, we put a sign out there the other night, and basically had to stole the next day. Let's say that we do, and I would be for getting this equipment and putting it out there, but what if somebody steals it? Basically, what's going on, are we?
We're going to send them a bill, Aaron, or are we going to suck it up?
No, no, no. The county would, as far as I understand, it probably would not be liable. I'll double check. But, yeah, under those types of circumstances, I know, I appreciate the county not be liable, but I'll double check that.
Thank you, thank you.
Ray, you, you shared with us previously that this, these, a lot of these programs are not only available to counties, but also to municipalities and the public sports departments.
That is correct.
Could you, could you explain that, and also in conjunction with that, explain how either different departments within counties, Rosenbridge departments, or municipalities? Rosenbridge departments or municipalities and counties can work together to fill classroom minimums.
Excellent question. As an example, we do, uh, what's called a basic supervision and management class. I did one last week for Bell County. I live in Bell County, okay? And I've worked very closely with the human resource officer down there. And what we've decided to do was, I had 22 people in class last week. About 11 of them were from the county. We had a couple from the city of Clean, a couple from the city of Temple, and a couple from the city of Belton. It makes for a better class because I guarantee you the problems you have in the county, the cities have as well and vice versa. And when they start talking to each other in the class, they come up with common solutions is what they do a lot of times. So if you wanted a class like that and you go, "I've only got 10 people, but I'd like to get 20," invite the city of Greenville, invite your other municipalities. And it's to any class that we do because it's always zero cost to the municipalities as well, okay? So you can always bring those folks in. Say you want to do a maintainer class and Mark doesn't want to send four of his employees from his precinct that day. Fine, send one from his precinct, two, three, and four. Makes the class, not a problem. Y'all can mix it up any way you want. We even do a Commissioners 101 class for roads because we get into the Texas Manual Uniform Traffic Control, we get into road maintenance and things like that. We like to have between 15 and 16 folks in there. So when we do classes like that, we like to bring in several counties together because I guarantee you the same problems you got, the counties, north, southeast, west around you, they got the same issues as well.
Okay, Commissioners? All right, I'm, Ray, I'm impressed and glad to know this, uh, information. And I'm telling you, Commissioners, we're doing our employees a disservice and we're doing our taxpayers a huge disservice if we don't use this tech, not use this training. And I encourage everyone of you to get on the phone and call Ray and get some programs set up.
We're looking for a start date of the week of July 19th is what we're trying to put together. Uh, Erin's been pounding the phones this morning. We're trying to get instructors lined up and we're actually going to hit it hard for a couple of days. We're going to do a program kickoff. We're going to send some to the operator qualification. And at the same time, I'll be teaching a, uh, basic safety overview class with those folks. We'd love to get precinct two and three involved with it as well, so, you know.
Ray, do you have a card with your cell number on it?
Yes, sir, I sure do.
Ray, I just want to say thank you for working with us. He's been, uh, for the other Commissioners, Ray's been great to work with. And part of the beauty of this program is we're going to kick it off on July and, and have several days of training. But there's so much flexibility, uh, in, in the schedule that we are able to, uh, arrange it so that our, if we, there's a lot of flexibility to arrange it so that, uh, we're not tying up our guys during the best, you know, road repairs and maintenance time of the year. We anticipate, you know, not being able to work much in the winter, which is common, then we can line up our class, a lot of our classes for that time. So there's a lot of flexibility and Ray's been great to work with, Erin's been great to work with as well. So I appreciate you coming out and working with us on this.
I was actually happy to have a county to start in summer because everybody else, we've done the plans. They're like, "Well, I want to start in fall." It's like, so the list is growing, everybody wants to start in fall.
Well, we don't want to delay the start date too much. My, uh, shout out to my crew. My crew is great and they do a great job, but there's always an opportunity to continue evaluating and improving on what we're doing. And I think it's something we owe to the taxpayers of this county. So we're excited.
Thank you, Ray.
You bet. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Okay, action item number three, presentation of the Title IV E Legal Data for Hunt County, Kelsey Frye. And if I'm lucky enough, we'll get your computer on. Uh, they told me to put it on the desktop and.
Technical assistance is on its way if we have any trouble.
Now, it says current input is the desktop and that's what you're supposed to be. Don't know. Here's, there you go, here's IT. Odie Mine says current input desktop, which is what it's supposed to be. No, he's done. There you go. How hard was that? Golly, I wish I was that smart, Odie, just to be able to walk in and it just happens.
All right, well, hello, everyone. My name is Kelsey Frye. I also have Micaiah Blackshear here with me today. We are representatives of JBI, Justice Benefits Incorporated. Um, we are presenting a program, a federal reimbursement program that the county can participate in. Um, I can start off with a little bit about us. Does this have an on and off button?
Uh-oh, call Odie back. Ryan, go see if you can holler at him. Yell at him. I hate computers.
It must not be on like a presentation mode. We can go on without.
He's here, he's walking in.
Okay.
Hang tight a second, Odie.
What was it? That, what was it anyway?
All right.
Are you working in?
Yes, it works for me.
All right, there we go.
Okay, so a little background info about JBI. We are a government consulting firm and we assist counties, cities, um, local and state governments on claiming federal dollars. So a lot of claims have a lot of work that go into it, trainings required, a lot of nonsense that counties don't want to put up with and so they just miss out on the federal funding. Um, we have 24 years of experience in this funding. We actually have a partnership with Hunt County with the Sheriff's Department, the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program. It's reimbursement for housing foreign-born inmates in the jail. Um, so I believe our team works with the sheriff, there he is. Um, we work on multiple programs. So Title IV E Legal is the one that I'm presenting today. Title IV E has several branches of claiming. Um, there's also administrative, FIPSA, maintenance claiming. Then there's a couple Medicaid programs, the Medicaid Administrative Claiming Program, Targeted Case Management, SCAP, as I mentioned before, and then several other special projects that we'll work on. Um, we offer comprehensive support. So from start to finish, we do the research, we look into programs that are available to states and counties, and then we reach out to you guys. So I believe I reached out to Judge Bench and then Judge Stovall. And then Bruce, we talked a little bit, um, about this program. And we offer program implementation and any training required, compliance, and then the data and claim management, um, that goes into that program. So Title IV Illegal is a reimbursement program that reimburses costs for child protective service efforts. So any efforts made by legal representation with the best interest of the child in mind are included in, uh, claiming guidelines. So this is for at-risk youth and at-risk youth parents for abuse and neglect. Um, this program has been around for many, many years. We actually have several Texas clients that we have worked on this program with, but the benefits weren't too high, there wasn't much claiming parameter. And in early 2019, the feds made a change to include the legal representation costs. So this is including, um, any fees spent on the guardian of the item fees to represent those parents and their children. Um, so this has really expanded the parameters. This has made claiming so much better. Our clients were seeing $2,000 a quarter and now they're seeing about $40,000, $45,000 a quarter, um, depending on the size and depending on how much representation is paid for. Um, so what the program kind of started with was the time spent on the CPS casework. So any court work, court prep, um, any follow-up, the placement preparation, and then the county attorney's office expenditure, salary fringe, any support staff that goes into it, big office expenditures, that all was included. Um, but yeah, the guardian of the item fees are what really upped the claiming reimbursements. So the impact has been incredibly positive for counties recouping these administrative costs for the legal representation and the benefit has been providing more funding for counties to be able to continue the representation, but also to enhance the representation. So what matters most is the representation for those kids and that they get exactly what they need. Um, as I mentioned before, JBI support is fully comprehensive. Our systems are, um, made and customized to fit the needs of the county. So whatever you guys need, we provide any training, the program implementation. We provide a time study and any technology software support that you might need. Um, our compliance support and then claim management support. Um, but yeah, just to recap, the program is a great federal funding opportunity that Hunt County is eligible to tap into. We'd love to help you guys with it. Um, we offer, um, a risk-free engagement. Our contract is based on you guys pay us once you guys get paid essentially for our services. So we charge a 22% fee for our services. Um, and we don't invoice you guys until you get your funds. So for some reason, Hunt County did not receive anything. You guys don't owe us a thing, we do all the work upfront. Um, we're really proud of this, uh, payment structure. Um, so we worked up some estimates. Um, I was connecting with judges and the county attorney. And so for fiscal year 2021, first quarter, that would be October through December, the estimate was $24,767.55. And that's kind of on the low end because we didn't have everything we needed to be able to work up the claim. So you would probably see more than that. And then for second quarter, that's January to March, we estimated $22,049. So those are some good numbers.
Can we go retro?
Pardon?
Can we go retro and go back and get that money? Or wait, go forward?
No, they can't.
Oh, come on.
I know, right? We, it kind of depends on the region, um, but yeah, I guess the easy answer is no.
Okay. I signed some papers earlier to get some of that going, is that been done?
Yes, yes, so, um, county attorney emailed the contact. I'm not, we haven't gotten any notice of a response from that contact. She is, um, a little delayed. She's got a lot of work, so, um, our job is to kind of be that liaison for you guys to help encourage the movement forward. So, um, we, we follow up between the two and.
You're talking about somebody on the state end or on our end?
State.
State, okay.
Yep.
Good.
Yes, so that would be TDFPS. You guys would have to contract with the state agency to be able to receive the funds.
Okay.
May I ask you this, Judge?
Sure.
Okay, we don't have any, uh, federal prisoners now, so that's dropped off, correct? Okay, so now they're handling the, uh, child protective services aspect of that?
Yes.
For Hunt County.
For Hunt County, yeah, but that's where the money's coming from. We, um, uh, I don't remember all the numbers. I know what we do for, we have 350,000 budgeted per district court for CPS cases, I know.
Yeah, it's a lot.
And of that, I don't know what the county attorney spends. I think he's got two full-time people maybe on it.
Yeah, he said two full-time.
I think that's right, yeah.
And then we also count, um, part-time employees as well.
We have, we have, uh, if I'm not mistaken, they were asking for one within the next five years to be paid by the county in reference to attorneys. My question is this, is, uh, child protective services, do you think that they will add another by their cost in reference to the next five years? How, how hard is that to do? Or how, how, how hard is that to get these attorneys?
Um, I'm not sure, do you know?
I know we have one, I believe, that's paid right now and I think we were trying to.
They wouldn't anything to do with hiring attorneys, that's our job.
No, I understand that, but they're doing dealings with child protective services as far as, uh, possibly getting reimbursed if we do hire one.
Well, reimbursement's based on what we spend.
Correct, the reimbursement is based on what you guys spend.
We're eligible to get more money back.
So we aren't really on the CPS side. We just collect the data from the county to be able to work up the claim for you guys to submit to get the reimbursement. So yeah, we have nothing to do with any hiring or truly the CPS or attorneys.
Okay, anybody got any other questions? So do we need to take any action today? Did you bring anything for us to?
Um, I believe Amanda forwarded you guys the contract, maybe the county attorney has it. I did not bring one with me.
Okay. Uh, I don't remember seeing it in our packet.
I can send it over to you all.
So what we, Daniel, what we need to do is approve, enter into an agreement with them and then I can have the, then I can sign it when we get it, is that?
Yeah.
I think we need to put it under old business so we could read the contract and handle it next time.
Well, that's fine, I mean, I, we're not, apparently we're not moving along very fast anyway on getting our information back, so.
Yes, we've already initiated the contact with TDFPS because we were aiming to have a contract with you guys.
Cool.
Okay, well, hey, uh, Odie, hang on a second. Uh, okay, we'll put it in our old business for next meeting and if you can get me the contract and make sure we get it, get it approved.
Okay, awesome. Well, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. Lee, are you going to do a PowerPoint? You're not, okay. I just want to make sure he's hooking you, hooking you up while he's here before I let him get away. Okay, we're good then, thank you. All right, Commissioners, uh, let's see. Approval accounts payable?
I'm making a motion, we paid the bills.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion, we approve line item transfers.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion, we approve budget amendments.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, approval of payroll and personnel, and I think, Mark, you want to introduce somebody?
Yes, uh, we have a new administrative assistant in the Commissioners Court. We're pretty excited about her starting with us, Brittany Gibson. Stand up and wave, I promised I wouldn't make her say anything. We just, we just welcome her to the county. She's going to do a lot of, a lot of good for us and taxpayers, so we're happy to have her aboard.
Don't worry if they call you Nina Agarde. Poor Jessica answers to Amanda all the time.
Your honor, I would like to, uh, Nina Akenbeck, which has been our, uh, she's worked for the county part-time and full-time for about 27 years. She'll be retiring and we're going to have a, uh, a little party for her retirement Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00. I believe it's going to be on the second fold, but we wish her well. And, uh, we're, she has done a lot of service to the community as our, as our secretary. And welcome, Brittany.
Second.
All right, we get a motion for payroll and personnel?
Make a motion, we approve payroll and personnel.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Daniel, we got anybody on the line? Any comments? Okay, well, we'll, we'll check it after we come out of executive session again. All right, uh, did we skip anything? We get everything done?
Please, sure.
I think we got it all done. If, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under items.
One through four.
One through four?
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. It's, we'll go into executive session at 11:15. It's, we'll go into executive session at 11:15. Let's see here. Gotta go here.
There's no public comments on the website.
Okay, we up?
We are live.
All right, it's 12:23 and we're back in regular session. Commissioners, we've discussed jail situation and talking about moving forward with doing a jail evaluation and putting a program together to potentially go out for a bond election at some point in time to build a new jail. And I'd make a motion that we retain Architectural Firm of Grace Hebert and Curtis. They gave us a proposal to assist us with these services for $75,000. But I'd want to make it subject to Commissioner Martin and myself reviewing a second proposal that did not get here, but we knew the amount of money that was going to be. And we'd like to review that proposal to make sure that the scopes of services do line up and we're not missing anything. And if we're missing anything, then we'll come back to the court and we won't sign this and move forward. And that is a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We do that all right, Daniel?
Yes.
Any other business for the court today? No, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.